Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. Grand Forks City Council's Committee in the Hall, Monday, August 23rd, under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1, Welcome and Roll Call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mauch.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Great, under Discussion Items, Item 2, 2.0 Reconsideration of Ordinance Giving Final Approval to Request Include North Congressional PUD, Concept Development Plan Amendment Number 3 Located at 800 Block of Thames Court. Mr. Brooks, so I guess I'll give a little preamble, Mr. Brooks. I had a little heartburn about the council meeting last week specifically related to this item because, in my opinion, I thought it would be important information for the council to have it clarified that planning and zoning did not grant approval to this item. And although Mr. Brooks was very clear when he came and told the council that you needed a supermajority on the vote, I didn't think it was clear that the message was planning and zoning voted against the rezone. And in my opinion, I thought we probably should have had a discussion as to why. But certainly, I wasn't at that meeting, and so I didn't vote, and so I can't move to reconsider. And I'm not suggesting any of you change your vote and move to reconsider. I just thought it was important that that information come forward. If, had I been part of that discussion, and I don't know, Mr. Gosstead, how free are we to have an open discussion on this item without a motion for reconsideration?
Hey, I was just about, I wasn't sure where you were at. I was allow you to speak, Council President Sandy. I think at this point, you probably need a motion for reconsideration.
Thank you. So either someone will move to reconsider or we'll move on?
I voted in favor of this, so I can make a motion to reconsider.
Only those council members that voted in the majority, and that was for approval, can move for reconsideration.
So I'll move for reconsideration.
Mr. Weber, is there a motion?
Is there a second by Cavami? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
Voted against.
Mr. Weigel voted against. Great. On a motion for reconsideration, we didn't need 100%. We just needed a simple majority, correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weigel. So the records show that Mr. Weigel voted in the dissent.
So I think, just for simple clarification, I think Planning and Zoning Commission had a few items of heartburn. Most of them were related to single-family housing. I don't think there was a significant amount of consternation about the additional density. Mr. Brooks was very clear at Planning and Zoning that this new development, the new design, and I'll use his terms, would be considerably more dense. But I think the developers last week showed that it might be more dense. They were showing 40 bedrooms to 40 bedrooms, if I recall correctly. And so I would tend to lean that rentals are going to be more dense. More of those bedrooms are going to be used than would be in single-family housing. But six of one, half a dozen of the other, it might be a little more dense, probably. But again, I don't think, I think the issue at Planning and Zoning was as much or more about the rentals as it was anything. So I did have a question related to that. And I know, and it was very nice of Mr. Coon met me yesterday, and we had a very nice discussion. We walked the property. I also spent about 45 minutes walking and knocking on neighbors' doors, asking people their thoughts. Everyone, all but the person walking the dog that I spoke with, said that they did receive notification. I emailed the group yesterday and let people know that the three, the two renters didn't have a problem with the rezone. Of the three homeowners, two of the three didn't have a problem with it. The gentleman walking his dog that wasn't notified, that apparently lives just beyond the 400 feet, he right away said he wasn't happy to hear it was rentals because he thought it should be single-family housing. And so, Mr. Coon, and we talked about this yesterday. Again, I think I probably have more history, or as much history in that neighborhood as anyone on this board, basically going back to Grand Forks Housing, or Grand Forks Homes, that the whole concept, their whole concept for that entire neighborhood was owner-occupied. And I don't want to hold you up because I think everyone here, and I think even the folks in planning and zoning, they want that development finished. And I think we can all agree that you've been doing a great job. And I want to see you continue doing a great job and do more of the development. My question is, did it have to be rentals? Can you, you're making duplexes. Can we just move the lot lines and put them for sale? Is there any way to do that?
Just not affordably. Like I said, it would have to, the best, it is an odd lot, right? I mean, it's on two curves, on two different roads. So to make it affordable, it would have to be duplexes to get everything laid out to where someone would want to actually buy it. It just comes down to affordability, again, like we talked about. 270,000 to 280,000, I'm competing with Thompson Homes on the south end. Living on the north end, you move up there for affordability. Again, the military likes it. It's a better rental zone with the students and the housing, you know, than it is a, I want to go and move up there because the single-family homes just directly east of it are selling for the 270, 280 range. It's almost no reason you would buy. Even our five-plex units were up almost to the 255 range for end units. It even costs more. And it just increases density a little bit. You know, whether it's rental, I think we're just looking to improve the traffic. I'm looking to cap that area off. I'm listening to the neighborhood too, right? I got letters of support. Built most of the units over there, so I can, they want that development done. And I want, I'm not hurting anybody's value. We have a market rent of $1,400 to $1,600, so we want good renters. It's not like anyone's just moving in there. We're property managing ourselves. Everything we've owned, obviously, we do solid yards. We do really nice projects. And we property manage them well. So like I said, as far as anyone I've built over there for, really, you know, they have support in us doing rentals. I haven't, I've heard only a couple complaints on the rental portion because they just don't want their property value being hurt, is the main thing I've heard of. And I respect that, but I have thought about, I mean, we've thought about this for a while, this project, between traffic flow and everything, even Mr. Don Larson, who lives behind there, I said, you're not going to be, you're not going to have all those cars just facing you now. We're splitting, you know, I had a conversation with his wife. I didn't actually get ahold of Mr. Larson. So, but it was very good, productive conversation, and they felt a lot better. So I've tried to, we've had a great new neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood's pretty fine with, you know, okay with the rental portion. And we've kind of addressed all three points, density, traffic, and the rental portion during the meeting last meeting. So, I mean, I take that to heart. That's, this is my first development in Grand Forks, and I really want to put a good staple on it. So this is just kind of a part we want to cap this project off with, this whole development. So.
For the record, Mr. Larson wasn't home yesterday. I knocked, and it was dark. Yeah, I would prefer to see single-owner occupied. I don't want to stop you from moving forward, though. I think it's important to note that the citizen group on our Planning and Zoning Commission worked very hard and are trying to do their best for our community. And perhaps they didn't have all the information when this item came before them. So I think it's important that we acknowledge their hard work and the effort that they put in. And although I don't always agree with them, I think for the majority of the time, we do, and we should, because they are our citizen advisory group. So in this situation, however, based upon our discussions and my discussions with the neighborhood, I'm okay to move this forward as was decided last week. Yeah, Mr. Weber.
President Sandy, first of all, my vote won't be contingent on this in any way, but people have multiple reasons to move into a neighborhood. And I think the character of that neighborhood is a real draw. And in part, your work there has contributed to that. Again, this is not a contingency, but can you talk to us briefly about how your development will fit in with the look and character of the neighborhood?
Yeah, great question. So like I said, we did about six months of, you know, just research and what to do in this particular property. But it'll look a lot like what the properties are there now. It's back-to-back townhomes, so we're going to split traffic out each side. That'll help with traffic flow over there, which was important to us. And then it'll be all LP siding, and that's kind of what we have, the same feel going on there. So it almost looks like they're for sale, but they will be a rental. So very much the same feel. I'm not hurting anyone's property value. I just need to increase density to make it financially even make sense to do anything over there.
Very good. And the discussion was quite different, but P&amp;Z had originally recommended support for this, and then had a different vote the second time around. At this point, I'll move approval.
It's a motion by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other comments, Mr. Veen? Yes, sir? Just a couple questions. The proposed rain garden, who maintains that?
That's maintained by the property manager, us.
You guys?
Yep.
That'll be a part of the common area that will be maintained by yourselves.
Correct.
The setback from the sidewalks, I know on Thames Court, not a lot of room, it doesn't look like, between the sidewalk and the garages, is that right?
I think the setbacks are, I mean, as all our other properties are, 20 feet over there. Is that right?
Okay.
25. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. 20 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks minimal, but you should be able to accommodate. No, I have nothing more to add.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Mauch?
So they're going to, I watched, I went back and watched the planning and zoning meeting, and I guess I support the reconsideration mainly because I don't want a committee that makes recommendations to us to feel as if we don't listen to those recommendations. So I do want to, you know, show that level of respect since I heard some were upset about that. And I guess my biggest hesitation is the lack of ownership because I think that that's what people are really after. I don't think in any way it would hurt the area. I think you're improving it. So that's not really any hesitation. There's no way to reconfigure those lotlines to make it sellable or to make it something that people would want owner-occupied? I mean, it seems like people are crying for owner-occupied options all over.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's just, it comes down to an affordability standpoint. It's just, it's too much risk for me to build something for 270 or 280 and hoping you come to buy. We're still sitting on units that we haven't sold at 230, 220. So it's like, do you really want to build more units? You know, it's a risk as a developer, right? So it just, I know these will rent, and I know I'll have good renters for it. And so the security of that just makes it a little bit easier. By increasing the density a little bit to 16, I can get more renters in there and have nicer units. So I just, I don't want to hurt the area by building not-desirable duplexes. Because like I said, I have competition with the south end. I need to make the north end better. And I've been trying to do that and keep it affordable. But it gets challenging to make it affordable and still compete, I guess, with someone, what someone wants.
So then the flip side to that is, if we would try to insist on the owner-occupied and say deny the request, then where does that leave you as a developer?
I'm not really sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I'd do with the property.
So there's not, you wouldn't just immediately go reconfigure it? It would still be a challenge for you to financially?
I'd have to try and pre-sell them or something. And it would be just very slow because I wouldn't just go build all five duplexes this winter. You know, I just.
So the flip side may be that this.
It's going to lengthen the build time.
For a long time.
And I don't know, yeah, I don't know if that's a risk we want to take. Just doesn't help my, yeah, it doesn't help my whole development. And like I said, I have gotten neighborhood feedback on these to help cap these off. Just, and that's an awkward lot, there's no doubt about it.
And the other piece of neighborhood feedback that Mr. Sandy and you have heard is that people want this finished quickly.
They want it. They've been building for five years now. We've been building over there, so.
And 10 years before you were building, there was building going on there. Mr. Weigel?
Thanks, President Sandy. I was going to allude to that too. I think I bought my house over in Ward 1 in probably 2015. And I feel like, for a long time, there was nothing there. And then Mac Construction came around, and these seemed to pop up very fast, very quick, and seemed to be off the market relatively quickly as well. I have a ton of respect for our planning and zoning. To me personally, I think that's one of the most thankless jobs or positions or commissions that you could sit on for the city of Grand Forks. However, I did find it interesting, and maybe this is something that we can look at for the future, but doing a quick search, I didn't find one commission member that lived on the north end of Grand Forks. And that kind of stood out to me a little bit. This development, I think, is good for Ward 1. I think it finishes off an area that's been a field for far too long. And as you and I talked, President Sandy, we were talking about articles dating back to 2012 and maybe even before that. And so I think the development's good. I'm glad to see it get done. I think one complaint that we normally get from anybody within our wards about rentals is the grass is overgrown, there's junk in the yard, the sidewalks aren't snowblown. Those are the three things that I routinely get, as I'm guessing everybody else gets. The one thing that I liked about this is they're taking care of the grass, they're making sure the snowers are moved, and I'm assuming you're not going to allow a bunch of junk in the yard.
Yeah, probably not, no.
And so I think that, that's where it kind of gets me. I have heard from military folks as well that they want something close to the base that they can rent and not have any issues with. They can get out to highway too quick and don't have to drive through the whole city. So to me, it's a win-win.
Great. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Dockler?
So I actually think I will probably vote yes on this construction because I do think that it needs to be completed. And I'm all for affordable housing in this town. It's a constant conversation that I feel like I have a lot. However, I am continued, or I continue to be interested in affordable housing that is single-home and not in the rental capacity. And I continue to be interested in having this conversation focused on the south side of town as well because I do live in the north side, and I love the north side, and I love the variety that it has and the diversity it has for all of these different reasons, including the socioeconomic. I think it's problematic for our city to continue to say, well, the north side's affordable, which to me begins to be kind of code language for, whoa! It's not as desirable to live on the north side of town. And I absolutely disagree with that in every way, shape possible. In fact, the north side is the only side of town I've ever lived in, in Grand Forks for the last 15 years. And the reason for that is because I think it's important to surround my family with a diverse group of individuals and for my kids and my family to have that experience. It's problematic to me that we don't have these same conversations about development on the south side, especially since we continue to talk about how we're growing out to the south. Well, don't people who also need accessible housing, rental and owned, also deserve to live on the south side of town? It's not anything that you have to worry about unless you want to develop on the south side of town for apartments that are affordable or single housing, which I'd love. But it is something that I think, as a city, we really do need to address. It's not appropriate for us to not be looking at our city as a whole entity and parceling it off into these special parts of town where only certain kinds of development can go because of affordability. That's a tired conversation, and I'm over it. But thank you for coming back and representing to us tonight and answering these questions. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a lot to say, we'll say that for another day. Any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye? Thank you, thank you. Yeah? I have two more questions. Bid award for Project 8373 English Coolie Diversion and Runway Repair. Sorry, Ms. Grazer.
Thank you, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. This is a bid award here tonight. There's, in your report, there's about three different areas along the English Coolie diversion that need some repair work, areas that have eroded. The technique that we're using to do repair is essentially to haul in rock, riprap, to do the repairs, stabilize the areas. So the project, if you remember, we've approved plans and specs, gone out for advertising for bids. We did open up the bids on August 19th. The low bid was Tager Construction in the amount of $136,655. The, that bid was about 23% below the engineer's estimate for that work, and we are recommending award.
Great. Any comments? Moved by Weber, second by Weigel. Any other comments hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Wish carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grazer. The next four items for public works. 2.2, bid award 2021 through 2023, street maintenance or street marking painting. I trust you, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, yes, I am.
Good evening.
President Sandy, how's your evening?
Good, good evening. Thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, so, street marking painting, the bid was open on 7/23, and it closed on 8/17. We had one and only one bidder for that, Diamond Vogel out of Fargo, and they had a bid of total of $48,178. And we wish to award them the bid.
Mr. Weber?
Mr. Blackwell, city paint, and I believe that we've been kind of experimenting with different paints or different coverings the last few years, and there seems to be a tremendous difference. Some disappear within months, especially if they're winter months. Others have held up very well and have gone through a whole winter and still look relatively new. Can you help me to understand which of these?
Yes, so the ones that you're noticing disappear more, we tried a trial base of water-based instead of rubber-based. So the ones that you're seeing mainly, like on Washington Gateway and things like that, those are rubber-based. On 24, things like, those are rubber-based paints. And they do adhere to the concrete and/or asphalt much better, and they hold up against our snowplows a lot better as well, too. So we have moved exclusively to rubber-based paints, along with curbs, any other paint that we apply directly onto the ground for markings, crosswalks, and things like that, everything will now be rubber-based.
Thank you, sir. I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Cavami. Any other comments?
One quick question. Do you still have the glass beads or whatever for reflectivity in the paint?
Yes, yes, we do. We still apply those if they need to be in special markings that need to be done, downstairs lines, things like that, yes.
That's good news. Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Wish carries unanimously. Mr. Blackwell, item 2.3, bid award 2021 through 24, contingent snow hauling.
Yes, this is another annual bid that we do yearly. This is contingent snow haul removal. We did have two bidders on our dirt and gravel and gallon construction. We wish to award gallon construction the bid as they bid all complete items at a total base of $79,520.
Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second by Dockler? Any comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Wish carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.4, bid award 2021 through 25, rock salt for ice control. Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, so again, this is another annual bid that we put out every year for our rock salt for sand and for our brine. We'd like to award the winner to Harry Hughes at a total of $69,671.
Any comments? Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any other comments? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Wish carries unanimously. Next time, I'll take these all as one. Item 2.5, bid award 2021 through 26, complete skid mount hydraulically agitated 900-gallon ADC spare. Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, that is correct. So this is an alternative daily cover for our landfill operation, so we have a second alternative cover compared to just clay. This here will actually have longevity for our life clay spend that we have. When we continue to build cells, we use that clay on the old cell, so cell C's on cell B, and we continue to move forward with that. With this, we will have, we will be able to save money. We'll be able to save time as well, too, with this new addition to the landfill.
Saving time and money, who doesn't like that? Good idea. Yes, this is good stuff. Moved by Mauch, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Wish carries unanimously. Thanks for coming into town to see us today.
Thank you, have a good night.
Mr. Freeland, we're going to talk about Blue Zones. Item 2.6, Blue Zones requests, Ultra Health Foundation.
Council President Sandy, yes. And also joined by, representing the Ultra Health Foundation today, is Kristi Aldren and Audrey Lorenz. They're going to do a PowerPoint presentation. Just want to give you some background. There was an assessment that was done that included Grand Forks. The state helped fund that through the North Dakota Department of Health. They also looked at Fargo, West Fargo, Bismarck, Mandan, and Minot. And so that's some of the reports that we have here and kind of looked at the health of the community. Of course, we're all about having a healthy community, especially during and after this pandemic we've been going through. The request here is for this evening is to become a Blue Zone certified community. When we talk about Blue Zones, it is a trademarked organization that performs these and you become a Blue Zone community. So there's kind of a way forward that they've created throughout our country and world to be healthier communities as we move forward. So that's what you're seeing this evening. The state felt positive about, enough about this where Governor Burgum did set aside ARPA funds. In our staff report, it's about 1.244 million to Grand Forks. A similar amount was put into Fargo for a project down there. And so the total project is a $6.7 million-plus project. So really, the state set aside enough money beyond the assessment to try to help cost share on moving a project like this forward in our community. Preliminarily, we have followed up. The mayor has gotten a message from Fargo that I think they are planning, proposing, that they're not going to plan to move forward as a Blue Zone community. And so we're probably the last community that's really considering this out, that Fargo. Just so you want to know, preliminarily, Bismarck and Mandan and Minot have already fallen off. Fargo is under the consideration stage, but it sounds like they're leaning towards not moving forward, just in full knowledge in that respect. It is a three-and-a-half-year process to become certified. In our proposal, there's five personnel that would be hired to do this in our community as we move forward. And I did ask Kristi Aldren, hey, you know, sometimes in government, you want to follow the herd because you may be safer. But she had the counterargument, sometimes you want to go separate from the herd and be distinct from the herd. So I think that's her argument, that why don't we become representative of something that's unique and different? And just because not everyone's not doing it, it's not a reason sometimes to fall away. So that's going to be your argument here today for you. We've had two meetings. We had briefings. There was a, I'll call it a community leader-stakeholder briefing. And I know Councilmember Dockler and Councilmember Weber were able to attend that meeting where they went over the presentation. We had several other people in the meeting, including many of our partners. At that particular meeting, Ultra Health Systems said they were going to be a partner, beyond a partner, a financial partner on that. I'm not sure how much they're willing to contribute to this end, but they're the partner that feels that this is really important. And you should know, I think Dr. Weiser said on behalf of Ultra, not only do they want to be a partner, but they want other partners to be in this, just like we've been in with one another as partners throughout this pandemic. So you should know that. So the mayor and I, and Council Vice President Mauch, and Council President Sandy had a meeting late this afternoon with Grand Forks County. And I think they've sent a message to Kristi Aldren that they are not planning to participate as a funding partner on this in part because they've been advised that they can't give taxpayers money to opportunities like that, so they are not going to participate. I know they're also talking with the University of North Dakota as part of a potential partnership to that, and I don't know the outcome of that. And they were also going to follow Blue Cross Blue Shield, which was another discussion point at some, two of our institutional partner meetings, is health insurance companies should be on this because, you know, the less you use health insurance, a healthier community should be good for them. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure what kind of response or lack of response they have from them. So really, today is for them to give you an opportunity to brief, get some feedback, and we really need to know where the city stands on this issue. The state of North Dakota has provided that the 1.2 million-plus is going, they want it to go away, make a decision by probably early, at the latest, mid-September, because if we're not going to move forward as a community, or Fargo's not going to move forward as a community, they want to reallocate some of those ARPA funds that they've set aside to other programs throughout the state. So that's the urgency that we have. We need to make a decision if we're going to partner on this, and then they need to go back to the other partners to see if we can make it a goal as part of this program. So with that, I'd hand it over to our friends at Ultra to make the pitch on your behalf.
Good evening, Todd. President Sandy, members of the committee.
I'm Kristi Alderaan, Chief Philanthropy and Partnership Officer at Ultra Health System, and I have with me Audrey Lawrence, our Director of Strategy and Engagement. This is a request on behalf of Ultra Health System, and Ultra Health Foundation would serve as the fiscal agent for the project. I don't think I could probably overstate how excited Audrey and I are about this potential project, and we are thrilled to be here tonight and to have some time to visit with you all about the Blue Zones project. I know, as Todd mentioned, several of you have had the opportunity to hear various briefings and reports on the Blue Zones. We're so happy to have a couple of you at the Executive Roundtable and others at institutional partners, as well as other meetings that we've had. And we are going to give you a brief overview and recap for those of you that have heard about it, and then also for those of you who haven't heard as much about it, we really want to make sure you understand what Blue Zones is all about. And then we'll talk specifically about the opportunity that is in front of Grand Forks right now, and then, of course, we'll ask for your potential involvement in the project. So I'm going to assume that's forward. Perfect. It works. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Audrey to tell you a little bit about what Blue Zones is all about and why we're so excited about it.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. Todd stole a little bit of our thunder in sharing a little bit about Blue Zones, but we'll tell you a little bit more. So we're talking about two different things when we talk about a Blue Zone versus a Blue Zone project. And what we're talking about tonight is a Blue Zone project for the community of Grand Forks, which is really a community transformation and well-being improvement initiative. And this work is based on Blue Zones, which are places around the world where people just naturally live better, longer. So there's been research conducted on centenarians over the last two decades to try to understand what makes them so vibrant still, well into their hundreds. So there are five Blue Zones regions in the world. There's one in California, there's one in Japan, Costa Rica, Italy, and Greece. And they found that these Blue Zones all had about nine traits in common, which we'll go through next. But really, in a nutshell, it is looking at a systematic approach to well-being that can be applied to a community, focusing on people, place, and policy. So as we look at the nine common traits of a Blue Zones community, or Blue Zones as they occur naturally in the world, the most important thing really is that these people move naturally. They're not going to the gym for hours upon hours every day. Their making daily physical activity is just an unavoidable part of their life. It's how they work, it's how they get around, they're just always moving. The second layer really focuses around the right outlook. So purpose is huge in longevity. And then also managing stress, knowing when to slow down and decompress. Those are also very important traits of a Blue Zone. Of course, it does matter what you eat. Eat until you're about 80% full, and there's a few tricks that the Blue Zones people around the world do. I think it was in Japan where they plate their food, and then they put everything away, and then they all sit down to eat. So there's not the, you know, going back for seconds or thirds or fourths or whatever it might be that you want to have. A plant-based diet is prominent, and also, everybody seems to like this, but wine at five, or drink a glass of red wine each day. But that's always with meal and always in the good company of your friends and family, which sinks right to the next section of the Power Nine, which is all about belonging. And it's creating that healthy social network, connecting or reconnecting with some form of faith, and then also prioritizing family.
I want to just add to that. Such a huge part of this has to do with purpose and belonging. So a lot of times, I think, when people think of the Blue Zones or healthy living, we get really focused on the exercise and nutrition, and as Audrey mentioned, those are important. But the sense of having a purpose in your life and belonging and having family and friends and a worship community are also really important, and it really speaks to the idea of holistic health.
Knowing why you're getting out of the bed in the morning, you've got something to look forward to, whether it be your family or the work that you have to do. What? The glass of wine. Whatever. So how does Blue Zones differ from other health improvement initiatives? As Chrissy just said, it's really about more than diet and exercise. It's really a way to engage the community, develop strategies for community well-being and community improvement. They take a systematic approach, really, to population health, focusing on activating people, so really working on changing mindsets and habits at the individual level, but then also engaging places so that we can optimize our environment. So working with schools, working with restaurants, working with our organization, Ultra Health System, really looking at how can those environments change to support the principles of a Blue Zone community. And then, lastly, looking at sustainable policy transformation. So really assessing that built environment of a community to look at things like walkability, looking at food policy, tobacco policy, alcohol policy. All those things come into play. And really, at the end of the day, what we want to make is the healthy choice, the easy choice, or really, the unavoidable choice.
One thing I just wanted to add to that, too, since we presented this a number of times now, we've kind of been able to anticipate what some of the questions are. And one of the things I just really wanted to make clear is that there's still freedom of choice for everybody. You can choose to make whatever, you know, choices you want about how you're living your life. It's not something that's a mandate for anybody. But as Audrey said, it does just help that healthy choice to be much easier to make. And so we, the community gets to be set up in a way that it just makes it really easy to make those healthy choices over and over. And then we have the data through the community assessment that was attached to your packets that really shows us where Grand Forks was strong and where we had opportunities. And so that data, we can use to decide as a community what we want to work on. So again, it's not somebody from the National Blue Zones Project who comes in and says, you know, we think Grand Forks needs to work on this. It's really about our own community, becoming engaged, and looking at the report that's got great data in it, and then deciding for ourselves, this is what we want to work on. And then, what's so beautiful about it is that Blue Zones then really has those tools and all the infrastructure and all the decades of research to show us what will make it successful for the things that we want to change, and then they also evaluate it along the way. So after we come to those agreed-upon things that we want to change, those data points, then they will measure it for us, and they will make sure that the change is happening. So that's another piece that's really important to me, is it's constantly evaluated over time.
So the opportunity for the community of Grand Forks, as Mr. Phelan said, started with an assessment in 2020, and Grand Forks was one of those communities that received the funding from the Department of Health. And a critical component of the assessment was really around community readiness. And what the assessment found is that really, Grand Forks does have a lot of the major pieces, so to speak, in place that would really help us launch a successful Blue Zone project. We have a history of collaboration and partnership, and that really positions us well to be successful with the Blue Zone partnership. Of course, there's also a lot of information, and I know that you all saw the complete assessment and original proposal, but this chart just shows really the cost of essentially doing nothing in terms of medical costs to the Grand Forks County adult population, and then what's called a productivity lost, lost productivity cost. And you can see that those numbers really increase dramatically over the next 10 years if nothing is done to try to curb the impact of, you know, our current situation, our current environment. And as we look at the opportunity, then, if we were to embark on a community-wide transformation effort, there are significant savings that we could capitalize on. So looking at over $230 million in projected value, and that comes from medical cost savings, productivity, so the productivity cost savings in terms of working absenteeism, productivity, et cetera. And then there's also the regional economic impact value, which is significant as well. So we've heard a lot about great things just in this meeting tonight happening in Grand Forks, and this would just build on some of those efforts for more excitement in the community. The process of becoming a Blue Zone certified community is lengthy. It doesn't happen overnight. It's about a four-year process. And then, once we're certified, then again, as Chrissy mentioned, it's up to the community what we do after that point. If we continue on with some sort of a formal arrangement, or if we feel that we have the tools and equipment to maintain the certification and do it ourselves at that point. But really, the total transformation is about a decade to really achieve the goals that we'll set forth. And as has already been shared, it is a significant investment with the total fees of $6.7 million. Blue Zones does put 20% of these fees at risk. And as Chrissy mentioned, we will identify those outcomes that we want to focus on based on what the community decides the transformation process will look like. And 20% of the fees will actually be at risk, depending on our ability to achieve those outcomes over the term of the agreement. We've also been asked, you know, what do these fees cover? And I think Mr. Phelan shared some of this, where it does cover the five full-time employees that are hired from our community and trained, and then certified by Blue Zones before they start their work. This local team is then supported by Blue Zones Project, another team, and then the national experts that kind of surround all of the infrastructure around a Blue Zones project. The fees also essentially cover access to the proven expertise and the research that's been done over the last two decades in terms of what does work in a community to improve a community's well-being and resiliency. And then, lastly, I think because there is this methodology and framework in place, it does also then allow us to hit the ground running. Now, I just said it's a fairly long process, and that complete transformation could take a decade, but they're really looking to achieve some significant outcomes in that first, you know, four-year time period, because we can just go, once we hire the people, and begin identifying what it is that we want to do as a community.
And I would just add, the performance fees that are usually at risk are 10%, and so Blue Zones themselves are really excited about our community, and I think their excitement really showed when they were here about a month ago. And so they have agreed to up that amount to 20% of the total. So really, they're putting more of their fees at risk because they feel really confident in our ability as a community to make those changes. So the next steps, as Todd mentioned, the state of North Dakota has allocated some funds to Grand Forks, and I even have an exciting update about that number, but they do have a window on that opportunity. So originally, you know, they would like us to finalize all the investment commitments by the end of this month. I think we have some wiggle room. We know you don't all vote for a couple weeks, but they are looking to, you know, up to mid-September to finalize that investment. And so that would be the number one next step, and then, of course, to sign the contract and begin our transformation. So here's the slide that should be updated. So instead of the 1.2 million, we have just recently been contacted by the Department of Health, and they are willing to increase that amount to $2 million. They really want to see this happen in Grand Forks. They're pretty excited about it. So that would leave a balance of about 4.7 for those four years, or about 1.1 million each year, 2022 through 2025. And as Todd mentioned, Ultra is really excited to lead this initiative and invest in it because it is a major investment for us as well as the city. We are still working through that final number, and it does need to go through our system, Board of Directors, and that board meets next Monday. But we expect to land between $1 and $2 million over the time of the project. So we would be so appreciative if the city would consider a similar investment of $1.2 million over four years, or up to $500,000 for years 2022 to 2025. And just again, with that limited window of time for our community to capitalize on the state's willingness to invest, we really want to make sure we don't miss that wonderful opportunity that is in front of us. I wanted to just do a few more slides that were in appendix when we presented this to the Institutional Partners Meeting, because there's some really important results in there that I really want you all to be able to see, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions as well. So you can see, here's some examples of Blue Zones results. So in Beach Cities, California, there was a 50% drop in childhood obesity rates. And actually, I was just reading again last night, and that's actually up to 68% now. They've had some updated stats since the time that that was, that that first came out. Albert Lee, Minnesota, is probably the closest place that has done a Blue Zones project to Grand Forks, and there they've had a smoking dropped by 35% and is now less than 15%, far below the national average at 18.5. And also in Albert Lee, a projected 8.6 million in healthcare cost savings for those community employers. And then in Southwest Florida is another Blue Zones community. I don't think we said this, but there are over 60 Blue Zones communities in, around the world. So we would be following a well-worn path where we've seen proven results. So in Southwest Florida, the daily stress has dropped by 10%. Some economic prosperity results, we really wanted to make sure we covered some of this. So 25% increase in Albert Lee in property values in the downtown area. We've been talking a lot about downtown tonight, so adding $1 million to the tax base there. They have had a 48% increase in tourism since 2012, when they started, and then an 11% decrease in prescription costs for the school district, and a 300% increase in funds given to the city of Albert Lee by its insurance carrier for cities' wellness programs. So there are definitely real results that are happening. Sorry, were you going to say something?
I was just going to jump in and say that Albert Lee was the first community where they essentially experimented to see, can we take these principles and apply them to a community and achieve the transformation like is apparent in the naturally occurring Blue Zones? So I think that's kind of fun because we can't be all that different than Albert Lee, Minnesota. So I think it just really demonstrates that it can be done very successfully.
Dallas-Fort Worth was another area that did that, and their airport healthcare costs increases running about 40% the national trend. And they had another local employer there who saw 16% drop in medical claims and a 26% decrease in paid pharmacy claims. And then another local energy employer who reported a 34% decrease in health insurance claims over a two-year period. So they're definitely seeing the results. The other thing I really wanted to, that really excites me about it, is that they get great media coverage when you're a Blue Zones community. And so I just pulled out a few of the places that Blue Zones communities have been highlighted over their time as, being in the spotlight as a Blue Zones community. So Forbes Magazine, CNN, the LA Times, Parade Magazine, The Today Show, The New York Times, NBC Nightly News, Good Morning America, USA Today, and Newsweek are all examples of places that have covered these communities. And so it can really put Grand Forks on the map nationally as well for this health initiative.
And I think the thing that was very clear to us, especially when the Blue Zones team was here in Grand Forks a couple weeks ago, was this is successful because of community partnership. It's not something that can come in and be done to a community. We've had the assessment done according to, you know, the rigor and the framework, but as far as what happens next is done in concert with the community. It's a partnership, and that's truly the way that it becomes successful, and we have such a great history of that in Grand Forks. So I think this is just a perfect way for us to move forward with another example of partnership.
It was one of the places that we rated the highest when they It was one of the places that we rated the highest when they did the assessment, was just our ability to collaborate and work across different disciplines and organizations. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, President Sandy. It seems to me that, if I could be so reductionist, that there's three kinds of communities. There's a community that can just do this completely on their own. There's six around the world. We're probably not, not one of them. There are communities who probably cannot do this, no matter how much help they get. And then, I'm guessing most communities with help can be one of these. And one of these means savings, lots of savings in health costs, reduced insurance costs, but real return on investment in terms of well-being. This is a workforce development issue, because it becomes part of our community's brand. The young families that we're trying to attract here, this is the sort of thing that they're looking for. And I'll go back to the beginning. I remember when I first moved here, some of the things that I said about living in Grand Forks, people, there's this obsession about how horrible the winters are. Winters are full of sunshine and clean air. In fact, other than the summer, the clean air here is amazing. And if, we've now lived for several weeks without clean air. And it's a wonderful thing to have clean air, something that we have almost all the time. So we are so easily poised to be one of these communities. You know, there are people who bike year-round here, and some folks think it's just crazy to bike here. This is such an easy community to bike year-round in, because it's flat, there's no hills to push up, traffic is quite easy to get around. We are well-posed to be one of these communities. And we have the possibility of the state, the governor believes in this, the state's willing to put up nearly a third of the investment. So we have others who are willing to invest in our community. It would be a shame if we were not willing to do so ourselves. And in addition to these other benefits that you're talking about, we just can't lose sight of the benefit of having a healthier, happier community. And this isn't some pie-in-the-sky thing. This is, this is a demonstrated model in our own region, as you've shown. And I believe that, and here I'm going to look to Maureen or Mr. Phelan, that our, the federal dollars that have fallen into our laps over the last year with, for various reasons, that we have some federal dollars that could be applied to this. And while we're talking about $1 to $2 million, what you're actually asking for is over the next four years for that total amount. So are there dollars available to us that could be used for this?
Mr. Weber, members of the committee, there is an email attached to this information as well, that kind of outlines for you how the ARPA funds can be used. Those funds cannot be used for this project, except for, with the exception of the amount from reduction of revenue. So that has a dollar amount of replacements funds of about $1.2 million. We have, as part of the 2022 budget, allocated those funds for other purposes, including the city hall security, road infrastructure, siren projects. So what you, if you were to use some of those funds for this, it just means that there'd be an offset and to reallocate those funds. And also attached to your staff report is our Economic Development Fund. And I think that's where you would be looking to resources if this is something that you would move forward with.
So, excuse me. So the possibility of a portion of the federal funds, the COVID funds, but also economic development funds. Economic development funds are supposed to be used for future gain. And I do see this as both, not just overall well-being, but economic development and workforce development. Those two things are so closely aligned that it seems an easy sell to make the argument that this is a legitimate use of our economic development dollars. And so, with that, I would move, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to come back with more specifics on how this could be done for consideration by the council at our next meeting.
Council President Sandy, if I could, I think we should also by, name a dollar amount over X amount of years, if we're going to kind of come back with a funding strategy, if you will, as part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. So there is a, there is a motion, Mr. Vee?
Second.
Second motion, okay, great. Further discussion. Mr. Weigle?
I think one of the big things that I've seen over the last year or two is dealing with mental health. And how does this project do that? Because I think half a million dollars a year towards, you know, counselors or to outreach programs could be used in other ways. How does this project directly impact mental health?
Yeah, so that was actually one of the areas in the report where it showed that Grand Forks really has, if you want to say it, an opportunity to improve, meaning we have a lot of people who wake up every day and don't have that purpose, or who feel lonely or isolated. So that could be one of the areas that we, again, decide as a community, that's an area we want to work on. So then, Blue Zones would help us identify those tools and resources to implement in our community towards some solutions. So one of the things they talk about is MOI, or a group that you belong to. So I know one of the strategies is to do different kinds of outreach to try to get people involved and find their place to belong, whether that's through volunteering, or area worship places, or other ways. But they actually have, you know, a strategy that they can employ to try to get community members more engaged, and to try to identify those who maybe are feeling isolated. So we would learn more from them about how to do that, but it definitely captures mental health, and that might be, you know, one of our top priorities as a community. And from my personal opinion, I would agree with you.
And the project itself requires volunteers. So there's the built-in opportunity to volunteer and get connected just by virtue of implementing the project, which volunteering has been shown to increase purpose and improve well-being.
I think one of the statistics I remember reading was that in other Blue Zones communities, over 80% of the community are aware that they are a Blue Zones community, and over 40% are somehow participating. So once you kind of get it going, it really kind of takes on a life of its own. I think the other piece, a little bit connected to that, is it really, it really deals with the social determinants of health. So it really looks at making sure that we're engaging our entire community, and that we're being very inclusive about making the healthy choice the easy choice for everybody in our community. And so, I also really appreciate that philosophy.
Yes, Ms. Doppler?
So, I like the idea. I'd love to see an action plan of what steps are going to be taken. I do happen to know of one that has about 78 points that could probably be absorbed by the Blue Zone process that was formerly known as the Welcoming Community Roadmap. There's a lot of those initiatives that would fall right onto this. I also think that the Mental Health Matters Initiative would fall very closely. But then, I would also want to have a conversation as council, looking at our 2022 budget, about how much money we'd be allocating to Mental Health Matters, if this is also something that we wanted to support. Because if they can't join, we consider that $60,000,000 as part of the monies that we're donating towards the Blue Zone. I do think that mental health in Grand Forks is a huge opportunity area for us to grow, particularly in access for all individuals, and not just individuals who have healthcare coverage. Because we know that mental health doesn't just target people who have a Blue Cross/Blue Shield card in their pocket. I think that I would be more comfortable releasing COVID funds if there was an RFP process for these kinds of asks. I think that that is going to be important. Again, we've been given a gift of all of this money to deal with a lot of these issues we haven't necessarily focused on prior. And it is frustrating for me to think of all of the nonprofits and organizations in town doing amazing things for our community with wishes and wants. And it's kind of seems to be this piecemeal, first-come, first-serve of who gets COVID money and when, when really, we should be looking at it as a larger collective of how to make the biggest impact. So again, Blue Zones would be great if we started thinking about how we can combine some of these things, and then utilizing that COVID money to the best of its ability. But really, that's going to be through in, some sort of an RFP process, so that everybody has an option to pitch their best ideas and put forward the best things that are going to impact this community. That's what I would really like to see. And that's, that's not anything you can bring forward. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing, because I do think this is a great idea that's worth supporting and talking about. But if we're going to release that kind of money, again, I feel like we have this conversation every time we talk about releasing COVID funds for these one-time asks. There needs to be some sort of a process, so that people know they can come forward and ask for this money, and so that we know what we're putting all the money towards.
I will say, though, that opportunities like this come along, you know, once in a while. And so, not everybody knows that they have an opportunity until the opportunity shows itself.
And I would agree. I mean, we just found out about if the state wants to fund this, and we have a timeline, and we have to get moving. But if we actually had a process set in place, folks like the DDA, HB Sun and Light, Blue Zone, all of these people would know that there's this money that's available for these kinds of things. Put in your proposal, and let's talk about it. There's a process. If we're actively making that known to the community and the organizations, they all have a chance at this money. They all have a chance at making a significant impact for Grand Forks. Because ultimately, that's, that's what we're doing here, is trying to make our money make the biggest impact. Because, again, it's kind of free money for us. We want to make the biggest impact with it. Why don't we have a process? It benefits them, because then they have also shown that this is a great opportunity for our community. They were awarded the dollars. Having a process just helps that whole kind of thinking and credibility for things that we fund.
Mr. Weigle?
Just real quick, the Department of Health has committed funds to this. From what it sounds like, from Mr. Phelan, Fargo's probably not going forward, correct?
Council President Sandy, Council Member Weigle, what the mayor's been told is that they're probably going to look at it community-wide initiative, but do it within and not rely upon the Blue Zone initiative itself. But they'll look to kind of collaborate on a locally-driven or regionally-driven strategy, is what we heard.
With that being said, is there opportunities to approach the state instead of, hey, the $1.24 million? Is there opportunity to get Fargo's cut, and Bismarck's cut, and Minot's cut for this project, to come back and say, hey, we'd love to be the pilot for this project throughout the state of North Dakota? If these funds aren't being used, why, we should be asking for everybody else's as well?
And that may be why the amount has increased to $2 million at this point. I don't know for sure. But at this point, they're willing to do the two, and we could certainly ask if there's any other, they're using ARPA funds for it.
How much was in the budget for Fargo?
The same, $1.25.
Same, $1.25. So there is $2.5 million at least previously allocated.
Was Bismarck, I'm sorry, President Sandy, was Bismarck the same way in Minot?
I don't believe so. I think they saw the readiness of Grand Forks and Fargo, that we were in a better place in terms of readiness, and so they were willing to kind of help push it along. I don't believe that Bismarck and Mandan were as ready as we were. Is that your understanding, Audrey?
Yeah, that's my understanding, too, that there wasn't even the offer to those communities like there was to Grand Forks and Fargo.
Can I maybe ask a question that keeps rolling around in my head? How did they come to $1.25 million? Did the state have any idea how much the actual cost was? What was the logic put to that number?
Yeah, they did. They've really been driving the whole process with the, you know, the entire assessment, everything leading up to it. And then, they funded the assessment of the four different communities. So they're well-aware of the cost for each community. They are doing their own negotiations with their ARPA funds. And so, through that, I think, months-long negotiation process, they were able to come to agreement that $2.5 of their total, whatever that might be, would go toward Blue Zones.
Mr. Cavani? This all sounds great. I'm just curious what our other costs would be. You know, you talked about walkability, you talked about the built environment. I don't see that in any of those costs. So is that something that, to accomplish X, Y, and Z, there would be additional asks from additional folks?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for asking. Again, it comes back to what we want to do. So it may be that, you know, down the road, there might be some recommendations, or, you know, it could be that some things come back before the council for consideration. But it really would have to go through that whole filtering up process to even get to that point. And one of the things that they cover in the assessment report is kind of our history of prioritizing different infrastructure projects. And so, they kind of know the things that we're ready for. If you look at that full report, I know it's really long, but if you kind of walk through that, you'll see they've outlined things that they think we're more ready for. And they do take the expense into consideration. And again, it's all stuff that we get to decide. So there might be a recommendation that comes before you, but of course, the council always has the final, you know, decision-making process on what goes forward and what doesn't. So it's probably not a great answer. But I think, you know, yes, there might be future costs, but nothing that's, you know, come down on us from above.
It's not set yet. Yeah, I can appreciate that. I think it'd be interesting to see what Albert Lee, what their additional costs were, and if there's a way to reach out to them and say, you've had these results, and is it 10 years or five years for them, and what those costs would be, and what things came outside of these fees. I guess I'd be curious to see that before. Also, if the state's willing to go to $2.5, and maybe Altrut's willing to go to $2.5, and we're at, you know, we're at $200,000 a year, maybe that's a different discussion than $500,000 a year. Me personally, that's where I'm sitting right now.
Mr. Vee, do you have some comments?
Yeah, you know, I think I first learned about this, maybe, I don't know, three or four years ago. I think the governor's Main Street Initiative was the one that really brought this forward, and it's been there several years. And so, I know from the governor's standpoint, he thinks this is a very important program. And so, I think there's some camaraderie or whatever that happens between us and our governor, to be honest with you, with doing such a program. Once you get into this, is it, is it an annual basis that you go for the funding? I mean, if you, if you got into it and you didn't see benefit, how do you, how do we work that?
Yeah, Council Member Vee, thank you for asking that. So my understanding of it is that that 20% of fees is at risk, meaning that's the part that would be refunded to us if we weren't meeting the goals that we had mutually agreed upon. So you, you've signed the contract, you work through in that planning phase what your measurables are going to be, and that's mutually agreed upon. And then, at that point, any of the costs over the next four years that we pay in, we're eligible to get at least 20% of that back if we aren't meeting those goals.
I think Mr. Vee was asking if, after one year, we're not happy, can we get out of it? Or are we, do we sign a contract for whatever it is, $6.5 million?
I might need to get back to on that. My understanding is the contract is signed for the full four-year period. But I can do some further checking, President Sandy.
Mr. Cavani?
Just a question. So the "at risk," does that get split up evenly, and some go back to the state, and some go, how does that work, I guess? Because we're, I'm assuming we have to pay it all, and then we're refunded?
Yes, I would assume that as well. And I would think it would be on a percentage basis of how much everybody paid. And I would think it would be on a percentage basis of how much everybody paid in, they'd get the refund back.
Maybe, maybe we could negotiate with the state that they could forfeit their refunds. Just throwing that out there if you need another card to play.
I just, I don't, I just don't understand. I don't understand. I don't understand if the state is so high on this, why isn't the state funding it? I don't get it. The state has considerably more money than all of the municipalities that have been discussed in this. And, uh, they have, they're the ones that got $2 billion in, in federal funds. I'll repeat that, over, over $2 billion. They have more than enough money to fund this whole initiative and for some reason they're really excited about it, but they don't want to fund it?
These don't work unless there's community buy-in. It's the same reason, uh, like the Flex Pace program.
But is that when you say community buy-in, you mean council buy-in and then council dictating, for example, how the next developments are created so that we're pushing people into a healthy lifestyle, correct? Well, I mean, no, I'm, I'm trying to be, break this down into what I'm foreseeing because to make people have a healthy lifestyle, to get people, you have to push them in that direction. We're trying, we're trying. No, but I think I'm, I'm trying to boil this down into as simple as part. You actually have to force people. And I, I think that's the term that was, it was, you're making them have to make the healthy choice. We're making them.
President Sandy, it's a carrot, not a stick.
Yes, I, I understand.
And there's always opportunity with the built.
You're not the one that gets the phone call about the stick all the time. I, I am. So yes, Ms. Mock.
So I understand the benefits of, you know, kind of the preventative, um, approach and healthy lifestyle approach. But the Blue Zones itself is a company, a brand, a marketing strategy that we're buying into? Because it seems almost like that's what's coming with some of the significant costs. Is that correct?
Council Member Mock, um, Blue Zones is a company. It was founded by Dan Buettner, Sr. Dan Buettner, Jr. has been to Grand Forks to visit us. Um, Dan Buettner, Sr. developed Blue Zones after spending a number of years discovering really these Blue Zones communities around the world. And so it was really his body of work. You know, he kind of figured out there's these five Blue Zones where people regularly live to be beyond 100, studied them, figured out here's these nine things that they have in common, and then put together this, all this research and develop the tools and the resources and then tried to start spreading it around different parts of the world. So, um, when you look at what fees are paid, um, yes, some of that goes because it, you know, was years of research and his own time and money. And then the development of the staff resources to be able to, you know, help the communities that want to do that. And then the, the five people that you employ locally, um, along with, you know, budget for all of the things that you, that you would do when you start a project of this magnitude. So that's really where the fees are going. You have, we have access. I think there are two people at the Blue Zones national level that would be assigned to our community. So that's, you know, a couple more FTEs. So once you start, you know, parsing it out like that, it, it's much more reasonable than maybe it seems on the face.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I don't certainly, you know, if somebody puts together something like this, it's, it's a proposal that they're putting forward. We hire consultants all the time. Um, I think what I'm struggling with is partially that if the county is not able to be a financial partner, I guess perhaps if the state is willing to give more, but, you know, without the county, I'm not exactly sure where that leaves us. Um, and I'm struggling a little bit, $500,000 a year. Like we have public health staff that work extensively on tobacco policy and things like that. And we plan regularly around the Greenway access and, and some of these things that, you know, we could employ a lot of people locally that would work with our local folks, um, on things that are all ongoing as well. So I, I'm struggling a little bit with, I think some of these things are things that we've done for years with community, health surveys and folks at Altru and public health folks and, and I don't know. I'm concerned that no other community is still pursuing this option, I guess.
Certainly happy to have Ms. Swanson join the discussion.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. I heard the Health Department mention, so I feel compelled to make a few remarks. First of all, yes, we are doing this work, but not with the synergy that would be achieved through something like Blue Zones. Yes, we work on tobacco policy, physical activity, nutrition, many of the elements that are included in Blue Zones, but not with the very intentional blueprint for the community engagement that we desire. We've actually been working in concert with Altru on our community assessment and our community health improvement plan for about six years in different cycles. And we don't have nearly the trajectory that we could achieve in this community unless we had a much more purposeful investment. Um, I do hear that ARPA funds are being mentioned and I would really like to explore coronavirus relief funding, which is something we received prior to and the county did as well, that might offer some more opportunities for flexible funding. I, I haven't explored it. I would need the experts like the Finance Department to look into that. But that would be one other potential source of funding if you are considering this or if the county's considering it or others are as well. But I can tell you, the Health Department was extremely invested in the community assessment. I heard so much great feedback during that process from all of our partners about how, um, engaged they were and excited to be involved in the process. I think we've been given a tremendous gift by the state, but I agree that it takes investment from local partners to really make this work. And it's not just engagement of showing up, it's engagement of having, um, a financial investment as well, too. So, uh, the Health Department would absolutely endorse Blue Zones. We feel it's a great concept. We've studied it. We've been engaged in it. I can't speak to where the funding will come from. That is your job. But we fully recognize that you have a lot of confidence in the work that we do around health promotion and wellness, and we would really love the opportunity to work with our partners at Altru in a much more intentional way through Blue Zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson, and thank you for answering my email on a Sunday yesterday. I very much appreciate it. Uh, other comments? Mr. Veen, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I think I, no, I am satisfied. I think the motion that was made was is to just take it to the next step. Isn't that right?
I believe that's what it was to ask staff to go and, and see if they can dig up some more money. I, yes, Mr. Weigle?
Just kind of bouncing off what Ms. Swanson said, if, if public health has the funding, um, I, I believe there's some synergy there. So I don't know what the budget of public health looks like at this point with, um, COVID funds, for lack of a better term, but.
Mr. Phelan?
I think, uh, I'm going to ask Maureen this question.
Ms. Dorsted?
We did set aside CARES funding. You remember we had that? I don't, I'm going to say what was all, 1.8 million.
I think we gave a bunch of it to the school district, didn't we?
No, uh, the, we had about 1. something million. We put that into 2163. So, um, as you recall, because that was for general well-being, um, economic development, if I recall.
Right. So, um, Mr. Phelan, President Sandy, members of committee, so you'll see on the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund projection that's attached, you'll see a transfer from the CRF Reserve going in there of 1.567 million. So that's the amount left of those dollars. So that's why we are pointing to Fund 2163. Um, those are where those remaining funds sit. Um, and, and I will visit further if there's any COVID-related directly that went to public health, if there's anything available for that. I would like to clarify what the motion, what the ask is as far as a dollar amount toward this project, um, that wants to be considered.
I, uh, so, um, although I have been speaking, I haven't been forwardly speaking, um, I think sometimes it's really hard to say no to people. And so I think you, the general consensus that you'll get when you come here is everyone wants to be a good partner of Altru, which I do too. And I'm not against this project. I just personally think there are so many, there have been so many projects and so many things that need funding. I'm not, I'm not behind this project. I also believe that this will lead to other problems that I'm going, we are going to have to deal with in the future. Because I, I, I feel like to make this a success and to do the things that, uh, that Altru is going to want, it's lifestyle-changing for people, which means zoning changes, it means, uh, community development changes. And I, based upon this eight-minute conversation, am not prepared to push all my chips in on the future design of our community when I don't even know enough about it based upon this, right? And so I'm not saying no, I just can't find myself saying yes. I just can't. So, but I'm only one. And so if there are others that are, that think it's valuable, I'm, that's okay. I have no problem with it. Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
I think one of the, the key things here is that Blue, Blue Zones doesn't come in and tell us what changes we need to make to our zoning. They, uh, help us, uh, consider possibilities and, uh, and, and do some of the research behind this to, uh, to justify, uh, possible changes that we as a community would make. To clarify my, um, motion, it's, uh, requesting that, uh, there be a consideration of where the 1.1 to 2 million dollars could come from over the next four years, uh, looking for, and I'll, I'll add to that, um, not just the federal dollars. Well, I, I was looking for the federal dollars, a combination of those federal dollars and other economic development dollars because this is an economic development and workforce development, uh, project as well. Thanks.
Any other? Ms. Mock, yes?
Um, I guess I still, I think we still need clarity. I mean, the question of whether the state would potentially contribute more if no other communities are interested is, I think, a valid question. And I don't think anybody can have that answer without, you know, further ask. Um, I don't know where it leaves us if the county can't contribute. And then I don't know that, I think UND was mentioned, but I don't know if they've found a source or if they've made a decision. So like, I guess I'm not uninterested in moving forward with a more robust plan, but I guess I don't think we would have those firm numbers to really understand what would be left to us for a contribution if all of those are kind of still in flux. Um, unfortunately, that's probably more staff time to follow up on all those things. So I apologize, but it just seems like there's a lot of moving parts potentially. Um, and the other thing I would maybe ask is, so, I mean, there was a very, there is a robust document from Blue Zones, which I assume is kind of their proposal document. But, so if we move forward with this, if we invest this kind of money, what do we get back from them? Because it seems like so much of it is involvement with the local community to make the plan. So are we paying just for their expertise to make that plan? Is that, I think that's where I'm still a little confused about what we're getting for the community when we do that.
Yeah. Council Member Mock, members of committee, um, Blue Zones actually would run the project. So we're paying them to, they actually hire, you know, the, they hire local people, but they're in charge of running the entire project. So they supervise the staff and the whole entire plan and the project, but they do it with our engagement. So, um, they kind of build that infrastructure and then they help through their staff to engage our community to make those decisions. Does that help?
And if I could, uh, one more clarification. So Ms. Dorsted, the, somewhere between 1 to 2 million dollars, what we could do in terms of those federal dollars and economic development dollars. But it was not my intention that, uh, staff, uh, start, uh, working with the state or other, or UND or other entities. I believe that's, that's your job is to, to bring that back to us. And if, if we have some idea of what might be possible and you can come back and tell us what, what's been possible from those different sources, that could, uh, help us further to the discussion at our next time.
Yeah, Mr. Veen?
Just one last comment. I don't know if I'll state this very well. What makes this program, I think, so different from many of the others we have is it has the potential to impact every individual in the whole community. It isn't one group of people or one project or one developer, whatever. It's really for some, one of the most important things we have in health and welfare of our people. And so we can, when you look at it, you distribute it amongst everybody, the value that I think you bring back is hard to put a price tag on, but it's certainly there. And it's, it's, I, I don't think I've ever seen a program like this come before us.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Cavami?
So I guess my, my question's more, it seems like we still have a lot of questions. You know, we don't know the state's involvement, we don't know other players. I don't know why we're, is this something that requires a motion to just have finance look at what our available options are? I mean, rather than doing something to just do something, you know, can we, everybody go back and we all agree that, let's hear some more information because that's essentially, you know, the best case scenario is we get more information? Or is that, I guess we can just vote on the motion.
Council President Sandy and Council Member Cavami, I think what they're looking for this evening is, obviously, we have two weeks, um, before the next city council meeting. And so if there, there is a, I'll call it a serious interest with lots of questions being, um, answered in the meantime and more finalized information, just, um, what gap are we willing to fill in this case? And I think what I hear in the motion is that you'd like to, for us, subject to all this, all these further determinations, there's a, I think the motion is to, there's a consideration with the funding of a, a potential 1 to 2 million dollar investment over, over four years, what I hear. And in the meantime, you know, with the 6.7 million dollar budget, with the state's $2 million commitment, um, we would have to come back to see what does, uh, a city 1 to 2 million dollar investment close the gap on this with all the questions that are being answered. And so you would, you'd do a final vote, yes or no. But I think what they're looking for this evening, if, if we are not interested, you know, we love, we, we want, love Blue Zones, we want to be healthy, but we do want to fund this program, I think they need to know that, just to see where they're at before they go back to the state of North Dakota and ask for this, is these are the questions and concerns the community has. They're considering investing further funds. They want to know how, how much additional funds you could deliver to the community, knowing that other entities are, are either in or out. So I think in the next two weeks, if, I think what they just need is a general sense of what the city council is, if, if they've, you know, crossed all the Ts and not all the Is, um, before they go to the other entities, including the state of North Dakota.
Any other, any other comments? Ms. Mock, yes?
Um, are there other companies that do this? Because one, I guess one hang-up for me is a sole source that isn't put out to an RFP or a consideration of us hiring five staff members of our own that does this. I mean, granted, I don't mean to put that on, you know, our own public health or city administration that they have to come up with what that RFP would look like or, you know, if they could compete with it. But I, I struggle a little bit with the sole source. So I, maybe a tentative, yes, but I, I have some concerns that, um, kind of go beyond just this concept.
Yeah. And, uh, not that this isn't economic development, Mr. Weber, because I, I hear what you're saying, but when we start talking about $2 million of economic development funds, there are a lot of things that need attention in our community and that those dollars could go a long way in other areas as well. There's just, there's so many needs right now. But I very much appreciate Altru and everything that Altru is doing and the Altru Foundation work very hard and I will support them wholeheartedly in almost every single one of their efforts. Um, so any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-3. Cavami, Sandy, and, uh, Mr. Weigle, dissent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where were we? Oh, great. I'm 2.7. Thank you. City Planner, Building Inspections, Employment Agreements. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, um, I have the honor to come back and, uh, we have a proposed city planner that we city planner that we would like to hire under a employment-at-will or contracted position, and his name is Ryan Brooks. We did run a process as detailed in the staff report. And thank you to Mr. Weber for participating. And thanks, thank you, Council President Sandy, for allowing a city council member to be on that. So we had a diverse group of folks that reviewed applications. We didn't get a whole lot of applications for city planner. We were going to interview two. One fell off, and we interviewed Mr. Brooks, who did a fine job and has been serving as our interim over the last several months in that position. So that group has selected this position, the position and the person, me and Ryan Brooks, to move forward to city council. We have had conversations with Mayor Bochensky, and no surprise, he prefers department heads to be contracted employees at will. And so we did have conversations with the mayor and I, and along with AR HR Director Tangi Bovet about this particular position and making a contract. Mr. Brooks has provided to us that he's comfortable being a contracted department head as a city planner. His predecessor was a contracted department head also. And so to continue that, he has asked for two things that we've negotiated as part of the agreement. That's, is number one, to be 95% of the midpoint of his position, and that's the salary range that we have, that $114,000 and change. The other thing Mr. Brooks has asked for is six-month severance. And prior to employment agreements, Mr. Baseflug, who has our building inspections director, who went to six weeks, the contracts were, were six months in duration for, if you're relieved of your duties without due cause, you would get six months. And I think if you look across the industry, six months in a department head position is a pretty standard across cities. And so we've agreed on those with, with Mayor Bochensky that we move forward with a 95% of the, of the salary. As noted, we'd move forward with a six-month severance for anything that's not related to due cause in his agreement. Secondarily, we have followed up with Mr. Baseflug, and probably no surprise, we would like to change his. We're requesting to change his to six months from six weeks to. And I think that's what Mr. Baseflug would have wanted back in the day, but he was willing to move forward as is with the six weeks. So those are the agreements. We're excited about Mr. Brooks moving forward. The department is excited about Mr. Brooks being city planner. The city, his city colleagues and team are excited about him being city planner. And maybe finally, he's, he's had a good interview process because he's been in the interim for several months. And perhaps even prior to that, Mr. Brooks carried a heavy load in the city planning department. And so people are, are all for Mr. Brooks to become our, our city planner as a contracted department head. I know we had a lot of discussion about when we had Mr. Baseflug here moving forward this contract, but we are asking it to be a contracted position. Mr. Brooks concurs with it under these terms to move forward in such a fashion. So with that, that's what we're asking for this evening, Council President Sandy.
Do you want them handled together in one motion or separately?
I wouldn't mind them being together, but if there's going to be disruption on one versus the other, we probably should separate them.
Sure, certainly. Is there any comments or questions?
Mr. Weigel? No, Ms. Doppler, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would prefer if we voted on them separately, please.
That's certainly fine. Other comments or, anyone's welcome to make any motion they're interested in.
I, I would just say congratulations to Mr. Brooks and welcome. But I'd make a motion that we approve Mr. Brooks' contract as noted.
Great. Is there a second? A second by Cavami? Other comments? Mr. Weber?
I have a question, if I may. So having served on the, you know, the interview committee, I guess, nice job, Mr. Brooks. I don't think he was the default applicant. I think he scared away the competition. And so it was, it was a sound process. And I have consistently voted against the at-will for these, these positions. And while I believe the last city planner was at-will contract, that was not part of the HR plan. And I believe that, and I stand to be corrected, that that may have been more of an ad hoc situation with his hire, but that probably isn't even important. My question is, what happens to Mr. Brooks if the vote fails? He would stay in his position, I'm assuming, but he would not, he would continue to be interim city planner? Is that what would happen? And there might be a future search again?
I think that would be a fair result if, if the contract's not approved.
And it's always gauche to talk about money, but we approve people's, the budget and people's pay. Would there be any impact in his, his salary, his income if the vote were to go that way?
Council, Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, right now, this is a significant increase from what he's being paid currently as in the interim city planner. So it would be a pay reduction for, for him to go back to that interim position.
Yes, Pistafa?
Could I ask you to change your motion so that we could separate it into two separate ones? Because I would like to vote yes on hiring Mr. Brooks and not necessarily saying yes to a contracted position. Not that I think it's going to fail, but I would like the record to show, I guess I'm stating it for the record, that I would like to hire him, but I would not like to approve a contracted position.
I personally would like to stay with what we have. This was what the last position was. I do like what they're doing with Mr. Booth, Booth Baseflugs. Sorry, saying that three times fast. What they've done with his contract to include that six months of severance. So I think you have, I don't think it's, it's easy for the city. It's going to cost them some money if they truly want to get rid of somebody. So I do think that six month is a, is a fair, essentially a buyout for that person.
You would assume there are going to be certain triggers that would cause that, a new mayor, other circumstances within the employee's purview. It's not going to be a randomly, Mr. Phelan decides he doesn't like Mr. Bozflug anymore and just wants him to leave. I, I don't believe that the council would tolerate that. Yes?
And I was just going to elaborate on that with Mr. Gostad. If, if Todd said, no, you're, you're done tomorrow to a contracted employee, the city has the authority to override that. Isn't that correct?
Actually, I don't think Mr. Phelan would have the authority. I think the mayor would have the authority to. And there, the ordinances, there are ordinances with respect to appointed positions. However, I, this one seems to suggest that those may not be applicable. And I think that was probably the six-month severance package that was part of it. So, but I, I wasn't part of the negotiation, but that's what I assumed to be the case.
Mr. Vean, comment?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Brooks. I think he's been doing a great job for a lot of years and has, has been an amazing person. I'm glad he's been here and is in a position to, to, I guess, go for and get the position. Having said that, I have a different opinion than I've had, no different opinion than I had in the past. I differ from Mr. Mayor Bochensky on this issue, and, and I have to stay with that, that difference, although I, I really appreciate the work that Mr. Brooks does.
Great. Any other comments?
President Sandy?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question would be, I guess, back to Mr. Vean. This is the first time that the mayor's office has had this kind of transparency, and these positions were just hired based on the mayor's. Is there some reason that that's not acceptable under my tenure versus the previous mayor?
Not in the votes that I've taken. It's no difference. I've not, I've never voted, I've never been in favor.
So our increased transparency has given you more concern?
No, not at all.
So had this, I guess what I'm asking is, we've been more transparent and brought this forward, and instead of just doing it the way it had been done in the past?
I don't know.
So I don't know what my question is there, I guess.
I don't know how it's been done in the past. I just know this has been, this is no different than I've been since I've been on the council.
Okay.
No, no difference for me.
Sounds good. Well, I'm excited to get Mr. Brooks in there as well. I think he's a, he's done a great job. He's had to go through the process. He had to wait longer. We even extended it to get more candidates. He was, he was the guy I was really, you know, thinking would do a great job. We got him in there. He's comfortable with the contract and moving forward. So certainly, you can make a decision on that, but we've got a person that's capable that had been doing the job, I would say, prior to his interim position, it was, took a leadership role there. So I guess we'll have to see how council wants to act on this.
Yeah, Ms. Mock, certainly.
You know, I think there's just a matter of, I guess, policy difference where some people would like to see these civil service positions and some would like to see them contract positions. You know, in this case, I think Mr. Brooks is very capable. He's been doing the job. I would probably prefer to see a civil service position myself, just given the stress of that position and stress of working with developers, working on behalf of the city and some of those different pressure points, where I think that would be nice protection for that person. But I don't think I can vote against Mr. Brooks. I think he's been doing the job. And, you know, even the previous person was under a contract position and was doing the job. So I guess I may be willing to compromise my difference just because we've got a person attached to it and I want to see the best for the city. And I do think that Mr. Brooks is likely the best for the city in this role. So, and I think the interview process is somewhat indicative of that. I think we would have had numerous candidates with a similar experience level, and we didn't really see that happening. So I think that that shows that, you know, promoting from within is also a consideration that we want. And if he's in agreement with it, you know, then that's something that he knows going into it as well. So.
Council President Sandy, I think Council Vice President Mock says it very well. I think we've grown with within. We really have a terrific team that Mayor Brown had and, and I like to say Mayor Bochensky inherited. And some of our best candidates have come from within. And so we always say that about even in our own workforce here. I mean, it's similar to the city of Grand Forks. And I think the six-month severance satisfies some of the concerns that people have about things being done to one that, you know, you have to move on. So I think the six months is kind of that compromise, if you will, between the, going to a civil service position.
I personally have always thought the six-month severance was obscene. And then I witnessed a very good friend of mine laid off, and I recognize, now I get it, that makes perfect sense. So I have changed my tune on the six-month severance. Mr. Weber, yes?
Mayor, I, you've taken criticism for, for a lack of transparency. I frankly have always appreciated the transparency from your administration and bringing forward these matters. As Mr. Vean said, I didn't really know how this was done under the previous administration. My position on this is, is more one of a principle, and it's nothing to do with your administration. Just in general, I am more supportive of the, the civil service. I would hate to vote in a way that would harm your income, Mr. Brooks, but I suspect that my vote may not impact your, your income. But we'll, we'll have to see on that. And that's, that's all my comments at this time. I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, for point of clarification, just, just because right now I'm not sure I've counted the votes correctly. If this fails, there's nothing stopping someone up here from making another motion related to Mr. Brooks, the hiring of Mr. Brooks, correct?
That's correct.
Great. Very good. There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the current contract as proposed by the staff for Mr. Brooks. And by the way, anyone that plays football for my alma mater, Grand Forks Central High School, deserves to be the city planner. All those, yeah, there you go. You're, you're next in line. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
I, I didn't hear you, Ms. Mock. In affirmative, thank you. Motion, motion passes. Thank you. Is there a motion related to Mr. Bozflug's six-month? Mr. Cavami moves approval, second by Mr. Vean. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks. You certainly were the person for the job, no question. Item 2.8, Recycling Services Agreement. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, what we've done in this case, we did an RFP, so we've embedded that language that was in the RFP into this new agreement. We also carried over some of the previous language we had as our recycling agreement. So with that, we're asking for approval of this agreement that, you know, kind of mirrors what we did with the RFP, subject to review and final approval from our city attorney, Mr. Gostad.
Any comments? Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
Confirmation, this is a year, year-to-year contract. Is that correct?
It is. It's a five-year term, but it's, it's a year-to-year.
Right. Probably 30 days notice required or something along those lines.
I think it's 60 days.
60 days.
We can, both sides can get out within 60 days.
Very good. Are we still waiting for a motion?
Yes.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Weigel. I'll note that based upon some of the conversations that I've had with Mrs. Grunovich, perhaps we should entertain some discussion with her about what other things we possibly could do, not necessarily today or tomorrow, but in the next year or so, it would be great. Because if there are efficiencies and ways there that we could work with a local company, not that I definitely appreciate our waste management friends, but if we could work with a local company, I think that would be great.
In fact, I hope we could have that conversation in advance of that 60-day window, so that if we do decide there's a need for changes.
Yes, sir.
Or opportunities of whatever.
Sure.
Okay. Council, we'll bring it back. It'll be, we'll have another budget season next year, so that we can discuss that again, this time maybe in May of next year. And that's the beauty of what we're doing here. We're just continuing on the current, we're not investing more in trucks and all those kinds of things. So we can certainly have that conversation next year or two.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll move to adjourn.
Item 2.9, 119, update information only. Now, motion by Weber, second by Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries for adjournment. Thanks, everybody.